Okay, good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We'll call a meeting for the study session to order. It is 6:05 PM on Tuesday, March 22nd. We'll go ahead and start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Dr. Finch, any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay, communications?
No communications.
Great, we'll go right into discussion items. Finance Department, Sheila Wood.
Yep, and we'll have Joe Conley, our Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations, is gonna do an introduction, then we'll have annual report from our Finance Department Director Sheila Wood, and then annual report of our Information Technology Department Director Jeremy Cox. So Joe Conley will start, and we're gonna go ahead and have the board move to the audience so they can see the PowerPoint.
How you guys doing? Everybody doing good? Good, glad to hear it. I wanted to take a moment of your time to recognize the two wonderful directors presenting tonight. Like most departments, they have been hit pretty hard by the pandemic, but their leadership and positive approaches to their work and standing and has allowed our district and their departments to continue to power through these difficult times. Sheila Wood, our Finance Department Director, Sheila has been absolutely amazing. Her knowledge, her dedication, her willingness to deal with me on a daily basis has been quite impressive. Anyone that has to endure that deserves a huge star and a pat on the back, to be honest with you. In all honesty, throughout all the changes, the continuous changes in the budget and everything else, Sheila has maintained her positivity and has continued to keep her team upbeat. We are currently in the midst of an audit, but I have zero doubts that will be a great outcome because of Sheila's leadership and direction. Our IT Department, Jeremy Cox, talk about a department that has taken on a workload, moving into two new schools, Chromebooks, and a multitude of other different requests and needs. Jeremy is extremely detail-oriented and always has the district's best interest at heart. His leadership with his team is outstanding, and I feel like I have to tell this story at least. The past holiday seating, we had a past holiday season, we had an ugly t-shirt contest, sweater contest, and Jeremy's team was all in on that. They actually wore these t-shirts with different pictures of Jeremy throughout, which was extremely fun. I was super glad that they participated in that. But that moment just showed the camaraderie and the teamwork approach Jeremy has instilled in his department. It was also nice to see a few pictures of Jeremy smiling. I know he tries to do that every once in a while. But joking aside, the fact that West Valley School District has had such an amazing engagement for remote connectivity these past two years is further evidence of Jeremy's skill and dedication to student success. I found this quote that I thought was very indicative of these two leaders. "The pessimist complains about the wind; the optimist expects it to change; the leader adjusts to the sale, just the sales." And that's by John Maxwell. As we know, there is plenty of wind thrown their way, and these two leaders continue to strive and find ways to ensure the department's overall success. In order to be a successful leader, it takes an extraordinary team of employees. So let's hear from each one of them about their respective departments and the amazing work they do. I'm very proud of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Very nice. Good evening. Can't believe it's been a year since I did my last one, but here we are again. For those of you that don't know me, I am Sheila Wood, Director of Finance. And every year, we kind of put these together and kind of struggle with what to talk about because finance kind of speaks for itself. But I thought this year, maybe we would talk about grants and donations. They've become a bigger part of our budget. So, to get going. All right, you can see it? So our staffing has launched. We have myself, we have Candy Prementiers in Accounting Tech, Gilbert Sands as payroll, Jennifer Crutch as in Accounting Tech, and Marie Bush as Accounts Payable. That's our team. It takes a team to do this job. So for grants, our grants are received from local, state, or federal resources. Roughly 15% of our revenue comes from grants and supplemental funding. Grant revenue has increased due to COVID. We get local grants, which are also donations, and they range each year, but they're very small amounts. They're between 30,000 to 50,000. I think this last year, they're 38,000. We get the money upfront, and so we don't have to make claims. An example is Legends Casino and West Valley Schools vacation. We also get state grants and supplemental funding, and that's about 2.8 million. And that gets awarded through apportionment and the iGrants system. So the one thing that I want to mention on this is typically, this is a reimbursement. You do not get the money upfront. You have to spend it to get it. And we monitor that in finance, pull the paperwork, assist with all the things. So we also use iGrants, and that is through an EDS system. Again, these are ones that we apply for every year. We don't just automatically get them. They're very tight. They have deadlines of when they must be spent. And you have to spend it to get it. So federal grants is the big jump, and you probably all know why. It's the Esser funding. We're now getting about 11.5 million. These are processed through the iGrants system and also the OSBI smart sheets. These again are through the reimbursement process, which means you must spend it to get it. Federal grants also have far more restrictions. They have different purchasing guidelines and bid limits, and they also have time and effort, which is to do with attendance, your payroll. You have to document what you worked on. The examples would be Esser, Title, the Sped American Relief, the Perkins, many more. We have about 19 federal grants right now. So again, grants have a specific date range for expenditures and claims, and that's important to note. You can't just let it ride and keep not spending it. You have to spend it. They're very time-sensitive. We monitor that. They're typically awarded for a specific purpose and have restrictions on how the funds are spent. They typically require tracking of payroll using some method of time and effort, and time sheets are a great example of that. Indirect rates for state may apply per OSBI guidelines, and they have templates that we use. They determine those rates, not us. Carryover or recovery, which is payback of unspent funds, usually apply per OSBI guidance. So if you don't spend it, they want it back. Most grants require monthly claims typically done by finance. Revenue is typically delayed by a month. So we wait for it to spend it, then we make the claim, and the following month we get the revenue. So there's always a juggling of time matching your expenditures to your revenue. Finance prepares an annual schedule of federal awards. It's called the CIFA report. It's heavily audited by the State Auditor's Office. And we have a person in our office, Candy Prementier, who does an excellent job. She's very familiar with that, and she's done that CIFA report every year, and I want to give her kudos for it because she does a great job. And grant allocations every year can be impacted heavily by enrollment. So no students, no grants, bargaining. Of course, as you give more and more raises, your grants don't go as far. Legislation, the economy, and the IPD, which is the measure of inflation due to state salary allocations for both certificated and classified. And that's all I have. Any questions for me? Sure.
Just describe iGrants and smart sheets, what that is, that process.
Sure, it's just a software, and you log in, and basically the grant budget is in there, and then you're just putting your expenditures, your year-to-date expenditures in there.
It's a reporting mechanism. It's not...
Yes, it is.
Okay, it's not where we go to get the grants?
They do apply for the grants through that system, through the iGrants system. The budget's in there, the application's in there, and then we do the grant, the grant claims in that system. And if, like for instance, if we spend money and there's no budget for it, then they would have to go and revise the budget. It matches everything up. So yes.
And even though there's some federal, it's all handled through OSBI? The federal money's going to OSBI, and then the OSBI allocates that out, or is it...
Not 100%, but typically, yes. If it's through the iGrants system, yes. But we do get some, like for instance, JOTC, we get grant money, and that is through an EFT process.
But the large majority of it is, even if it's federal money, the federal money is allocated through the state agencies.
Yes, that's correct. Typically, yes, you have to... Yes, and it can be longer. It can be longer. Sometimes when they're preparing a budget for a grant, they don't know necessarily what we're gonna spend it on. So they put in a budget, then when we start spending it, they realize we're spending it a little bit differently than what they budgeted because it's pretty hard. You're guessing on how much your benefits are gonna be. Or is it gonna be, there may be a need that suddenly comes up, well, we're gonna need to buy Chromebooks that we didn't plan for, so they have to go in and change the budget before we can even claim it, and that's a process as well. So it can be delayed even further than the three days.
Slightly different question, not on the presentation with finance driven. I think Joe just mentioned that, just starting our audit, our annual audit with the state, State Auditor's Office. This is just, this is the... So we go, we have a big one every so often, and then and then every year, we have sort of the smaller ones.
That's correct.
Which one is it this year?
It's the smaller one. It's the financial. It's the smaller one, and then we have a three-year, which is the accountability.
Right, and it's a smaller one. It's been my experience, my observation, that they've got their thing that they're particularly looking at this year. Do you know what that thing is?
This year, I think, is probably, so what happens is OSBI will have new mandates for the Finance Department, which is very challenging and always fun. They implemented Activity 34, which has to do with professional development for certificated staff. I think they're gonna look heavily at that. There's very specific accounting guidelines to how you book that, and it's not easy. And then the other thing I think they're gonna look at is probably subfund. They're probably gonna look at that pretty heavy to see how we're booking things and how we're accounting for those dollars. Yeah, you're right. Esser will be heavily audited. They've said Esser is going to be a focus.
I'm sorry, what was the second, subfund?
Possibly the subfunds, yes. Just how we're booking. Local dollars.
Professor, you're gonna fix to do with everything else. If you just look at Esser funds by themselves, then how much are we having received, we will receive, and when will we stop receiving?
We have...
Go ahead.
No, you sure? No, I don't want to say.
Yep, go ahead.
8.7 million, I think is what we're at. We have claimed so far.
We already claimed Esser one fully, and that was $767,000. That's done.
And you have until 20 November of 2024 to spend. Correct.
And we have...
It's not free spending. It's not like an open check.
Right.
A lot of guidelines, federal guidelines, heavily audits, we have to ensure. 8.7, for us, one, two, and...
Combined. And we're working on the learning loss piece of it, trying to get that spent down because there is time restrictions on that. We have spent Esser one, and then we'll focus on, we're focusing now on getting those funds spent before the deadlines. There's deadlines, and there's also restrictions on what you can spend it on.
That's what we're gonna spend, that's what we're gonna spend next year.
Pardon me?
What you're spending, that's what we're gonna spend next year.
Well, I think that's a, I mean, that's a large discussion. It's a lot of needs around the construction. We can plan for those types of things, targeting assistance, earnings, whatever we need from those perspective.
Really?
Summer school.
Without a pandemic, getting more...
No, there's long-term effects as far as learning. Utilize those funds for those targeted things.
We're trying to get those students, they want that money spent. Again, the students, the grades back up, social, emotional, learning loss, that's big learning loss.
Everything with COVID has changed every five minutes. Do the guidelines change as often as...
You're talking about how you spend that, sir?
Yeah.
No, that's been pretty open as far as what it's... I mean, I think we've added a little bit more to bring them in those. I know some districts that see much larger amounts than we have in capital projects, H VAC, some of those types of things will allow a recent... But we don't have that capability as far as... Back on that night, as far as...
And they will have to justify what they spend, so it's a little challenging.
Thanks for answering questions.
Sure. I'm getting used to it. That's okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. Hello, I'm Jeremy Cox, IT Director. For those of you don't know me. I can't see this. Let me get rid of this guy. So talking about, I'm gonna cover some of the little bit different than I normally do. I'm gonna actually cover some things. We get questioned about quite a bit from the staff, the community, students. So we'll talk about how our student Chromebooks are getting filtered. So we have three scenarios here. We have a Chromebook that's on our campus, Chromebook that's off our campus, and then all the other devices throughout our district, whether it be an iPad or a Windows device or a TV or any other thing. So we'll start about the Chromebooks here on campus. So we have, well, I think we have three different layers. So every Chromebook, a student Chromebook, has a smooth wall extension. Smooth wall is the appliance that we use for our content filtering. So that is the SSL decryption. So it decrypts all of the internet traffic. I forget who, the dumb one down here, the all the internet traffic that we go through, the secure connection. So we don't decrypt banking, but banking's an example. You see the HTTPS on the top left corner of your site. That's an encrypted site. So any of the sites like google.com is actually HTTPS now. So we decrypt all of that traffic so we can inspect it to make sure that we're adding a clean internet to the students, to our best of our ability. Obviously, there's always, there's billions of websites and millions getting every day, so it's an impossible task to keep everything safe all the time, but we do our best. And one of those ways is through the smooth wall extension. On top of that, we use an extension called the Bark. It's also content filtering. It does the same thing as a smooth wall to a lesser ability as far as the content filtering. Smooth wall is the big appliance. Bark is doing some minimal content filtering, but it's also doing filtering, actually scraping the screen and actually looking at the screen. It's also going through the students' G-drives and scraping that and looking for for warning emails, warning messages, warning content. Things like, well, actually, I have a slide about it later on, so we can go a little deeper. That's the layer two. And then when they're on access, they're connected to our wireless access points. You can see them throughout the building. One here, one up there in the corner. There's actually, we have actual access control lists. So they're actually blocking pretty much everything but internet traffic, so we're not letting them get out and cause havoc on our network. And then they go, finally, the last step is they get to our Next Gen Firewall. Clicked the button by accident. So our Next Gen Firewall is actually, it's taking that, decryption is decrypting the traffic, but it's also looking for things like, let's say you're going to Google. It's gonna be looking for the signatures for the Google application. So Google itself has certain signatures that are getting sent over the network, and we're tagging that and identifying that, trying to find kids that are trying to use VPNs, trying to bypass our network. So we're looking at inspecting every one of those packets. So I like to say we do a pretty, I mean, knock on some wood there, of actually keeping our students safe and trying to prevent them from getting out there. Fortunately for us, and unfortunately for us, I don't know how you all look at it, but we have some pretty talented students out there that find a way. And if there's a will, there's a way, and they're constantly out there testing our resolve and constantly challenging us. So we appreciate those students, and we encourage that behavior, and we try to block as much as we possibly can. But there are some good ones. Innovation Center is great. It's a great story of success right there. We have some great kids down there learning some great stuff. Becoming a challenge for me. So it's great things. And then we can look at when they're actually off-campus. We're still filtering. We're still trying to provide that safety net for the students, and you're gonna see that smooth wall extension. It goes with them. It's always on that Chromebook. And that Bark extension's always on the Chromebook, always constantly scraping those webpages and scraping that Google Drive, looking for warnings. And then we'll kind of go with the last one. I didn't, that was weird. I did do something pretty on this one. So all the other devices are actually gonna connect to our wireless, do that through the access control list. They're gonna hit their smooth wall appliance. We have, we actually have three different pathways out to the internet from our internal network. One of them is for Chromebooks. They go out directly to our Next Gen Firewall and out. The rest of us go through two different legs to our two different smooth wall appliances, where we're filtering all of our staff and all the students and Windows devices through that appliance. And then obviously, we hit the Next Gen Firewall, and then we're out to the internet. And then, can't see that, but what is Bark? We'll talk about Bark real quick. Of course, that is a terrible spot, is it not? I'm gonna move that guy. There we go. Thank you. So Bark is actually, it does web filtering. Like I said, it's to a lesser extent than the smooth wall, but it does web filtering. Actually, we actually looked at the, and we have zero blocks, which means that our smooth wall is catching everything, so it's a pretty good sign. We have, it does content monitoring, like I talked about earlier, and you'll see, I have another part of this slide here in a second. And then we do alerting. So our principals get alerts, our superintendents get alerts. I know Stacy really loves the alerts. And depending on what type of alert, actually, our school counselors would be alerted as well, depending on the severity of it and the different type alert. Don't ask me what that is. I can't remember because I didn't set it up, so I'm not the expert on that. And then we have, to date, last I checked, this was on Wednesday, I believe, we had 404-point million activities scanned through our, for the school year. So quite a bit of stuff, quite a bit of data they have to go through, quite a bit of alerts, quite a bit of stuff. So you guys should see here, this is the actual alert as of Wednesday. So this is the amount of alerts we have. We have 5,112, 5,012, not 1,000, 5,012 alerts. Our kids like to say the bad words, apparently. We have quite a few bullying, some violence, self-harm, suicidal. Those are the real ones. They're all real, but those are some interesting ones where we're catching these searches, these warning flags, and we're able to, I know Stacy, again, she's done a lot of these. I know she has. We've, we were able to get counselors out there and talking to the parents, talking to the kids, getting them support and getting them help to kind of keep that social, emotional, what's that word? Wellness up, depression, alcohol, drugs. So you can see all the different alerts that we get. So dangerous organizations, I'm glad that's only one. I wish the self-harm would be lower, but we're still getting them and still catching them. So it's one of the steps we're taking to try to keep our kids safe. Yes, sir, absolutely. Yes.
Or something that they put on there for others to see, I mean, how does that work?
So, you're asking, I'm gonna recap for the Zoom audience here. So you're asking about the hate speech, and how does that, what does that look like? I have no idea. Stacy might have a better idea what it looks like. Yeah. So as far as alerting is concerned, and that's what Stacy was talking about for our Zoom audience. So we do have an alerting system. So if one of these things are triggered, yes, it goes to our principals. Depending on the severity of it, we might just be notifying the students, say, hey, knock that off. Don't do that again. Typically, that's the profanity or less, less, lower level offenses. But if the higher levels, the higher alerts, they're going to the superintendents, the principals, the counselors, and they're actually intervening. Sometimes we get text messages, phone calls from Bark telling, hey, there's a problem. I mean, somebody on it right now. As far as hate speech, how we define that, that's a Bark algorithm that they do. I couldn't give you an example. I haven't, I'm not, I'm not really in this often. I don't, I don't look at this very, I set it up, the high-level stuff, and somebody else manages. I don't have an answer for it.
It also brings me to one about weapons. So who knows what kind of weapons they're talking about in this, or, and obviously, how does that get captured? I'm just curious how we recognize that.
I know that we're not only scraping the words in the emails or the words in the Google Drives, like there were, we're also looking at pictures and what they're searching for, like even their Google searches. So they're searching for, let's say, there's an anime sword. That would show up as a weapon. Or they're looking for a Nerf gun. That would show up as a weapon. It might be a lesser offense because it's a Nerf gun opposed to an assault rifle type of thing. So there's actually people on the other side that are looking at these, not us. Bark employees are looking at these questionable or borderline offenses or warnings, and they're determining if it's something that's higher level or Nerf gun. So it's a complex, complicated algorithm and research. I can send you a lot more information on it if you want. We can actually, I can actually send you a ton of documentation for it. Unfortunately, I don't have the answers to that because I'm not an expert in this. I try to stay away from this. I let somebody else in my team manage it because, as you can see, it's a lot of work. And I'm sure Stacy will agree with me. This could be a full-time position in the district, if not two or three, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of alerts, take in a lot to deal with, so.
Obviously, if there's something that triggers a disparity type of thing, you know, it's, somebody's not just talking about that. Clearly, they're showing that or they're indicating in some way that they have a weapon that, that's what we're looking for.
That's correct. Yeah, we're looking for intent or intent to find something, intent to do something, something wrong. So they're intending to look for nudity pictures, or they're intending to find assault rifles, or they're intending to go to a KKK website. Those are some examples. Or they're intending to to go to a KKK website, those those are some examples, so the. They're looking at and they're looking at intent, um and you can tell the difference because somebody mistypes a word versus. And you can see that not only can we see the 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 that instance that hit it, but we can all see the the. That up to all of the web browser traffic that led to that point, what what they're doing after they went to that site and got blocked. Uh what what the next search is and what the next search is, or what the searches were that led to that spot, so it a lot of times we're seeing it's. As they're starting something and then it's taken in a different direction than than they sometimes they even intended. Um so it it all depends on intent, really, that's what it comes down to. Right, yeah, we we absolutely have that those different learning tiers and typically the the the. Profanity obviously is going to be a little lower than than self harm is going to be high, it's going to be self harms typically phone calls, emails, text messages. To the admin, the principal or superintendent's principles and sometimes counselors, I don't know what level they're on. That's a good question. I I have no idea, I haven't haven't looked at that data, so. I'll add that for my next one, we'll look at the data for comparing our our data opposed to other schools, I'm sure sure bark has some of that some of that analytics there. Man, a problem. I'm gonna recap for the Zoom audience too, so uh Peter Finch over there said the. But not only did our our wellness checks happen, we can do wellness checks to the police office as well. And we're actually calling the police office and they are sending police officers to do one check, so excellent, sir. We absolutely contact law enforcement whenever there's, whether it be uh child pornography, whether it be. Um weapons, self harm, uh potential hate speech, depending on the the type of uh. Violence, sexual contact, lots of different options where or scenarios where we've contacted law enforcement for sure. We scrub the Google Drive, so no matter where they access the Google Drive from, it's it's the Google Drive, doesn't go anywhere. So they can access it from their phone, they can access it from our Chromebooks, they can access from anything, anywhere in the world, it's still our drive and we still manage it and still our our data. Any other questions? It is, yes, with the exception of bark. So we we are not filtering bark, so uh because we don't, we're not installing applications on or extensions on on somebody else's device. Like the iPads, the Windows devices, we're not installing that that either the smooth wall, we don't have a smooth wall. Application install for Windows and we don't have one for iPads, so they are still going through our 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 content. Through an appliance, so actually it's, they're sending all of our data to an actual server in our server room. That's taking that traffic and decrypting it and then re 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 encrypting it and sending it out, so it's still happening, it's just happening on a different appliance.
I have my iPhone.
Yep.
I'm logged into the district's wifi. And I sent a text message that is.
So your 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 question was about whether an iPhone and you send. An iPhone's connected to our wifi and you send a text message, do we get an alert? No. Um text messaging is is that's cellular traffic, so it's going to be sent differently than. Uh like an internet traffic, so port eighty, so we block all SMS texts, so. But traffic, that's a different process, so SMS texting goes through the cellular network, so you're sending it out to yourself, cell connection. All your web and web traffic, traffic's going out through the our our network, so we don't allow wifi calling. Let's say you were to email, we're not going to be able to look at your email and see what you're sending, because that's a different, it's a different protocol, it's not, we're decrypting. Uh email or HTTP and HTTPS, so web traffic. Uh so these, the other things you're talking about are different, are different protocols, so. Uh SMS, I don't remember SMS texts, but like an email is going to be going out, a different protocol, different application, going out to internet different than. Than web traffic, so we're not decrypting that per se, we are looking at that traffic to make sure it's not bad traffic, not nefarious traffic. Um but we are not decrypting it because it's different, uh so we can't really look at. That, that's a that's a different, now if you were to log your your Google like Gmail and send something to Gmail. It would, the bark, the bark program would scrape that screen and see it. Correct. We're we're monitoring web traffic, that's that's what we're required to by for SIPA. Civil laws is is wire requiring. Email is a different, that's a different beast, that's a whole different ball of wax, that's that's a it's a different, completely different world. Um so we're 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 filtering web, web traffic, so we're trying to prevent them from going to. Uh pornography sites, uh harm, self harm or not so uh pornography sites and just. Bad places, bad places on internet, so that's what. What, so if a student is issued a Chromebook from us. They are filtered by us, so this is the off off campus network, so it's going to go through our smooth wall extension, so it's. Oh, you're you're fine, so it's going to go through our smooth wall extension, so it's just like our appliance here, it's going to content filter. And then it's going to go through the bark extension, so it's going to hit two layers of 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 protection and then it's going to go out to internet. So we're still filtering, so we're still protecting, getting as much as we possibly can, uh the only thing we're not really getting is the next gen firewall. But uh for for the students and HTTP traffic, that's not necessary for for that, so still filtering. I know we we had some some parents early on, early about when we were, I think our middle school deployment. We had some parents that tried or opted out, but I think after a certain period of time, they. Yeah, we haven't had any since your adoption, that was twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
So. Yes, that's absolutely right, so we have, um in this case, we have two layers, when they're on site, they have three or four different layers of of protection, so. And that smooth wall, it it does a pretty good job of getting ninety-nine percent of the stuff, so it's it's pretty, it's pretty good, we spent a lot of time on that, I've actually have. Our assistant admin, that's her, her full time job is pretty much that monitoring that guy as well as some a few other things, but. Uh so it's a it's a lot of work to to go through that, we have a lot of traffic every day, so our students are, we have five thousand students and they all have Chromebooks. Uh we have several hundred teachers, it's a lot of a lot of traffic that we have to go through, so it's it's a lot of a lot of work to keep up on that and make sure that. Everything is going out that that's good and safe and we're we're blocking and uh keeping the the good stuff out and the bad stuff in or vice versa. So another part of part of capturing that the the other type of traffic, it it becomes a legal issue, then you're starting to get into. Um if you if we were to decrypt bank accounts, uh which we don't because that's 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 bad juju. Uh well, we can't decrypt some traffic, so there's things that we cannot legally decrypt. Uh because because of of um security and safety issues, so there's some things that some, there's areas that we have. Our hands are kind of tied, so we have to kind of keep that in mind as well, so continue on. See if we can get past this here. All right, bark, we covered that. All right, so talk about some things that we accomplished in twenty twenty-one, it was a it was a nice fun year, we had a a few projects going on, I don't know if you guys know that. Uh we did, I don't know if you heard, but there's an Apple Valley, some of you, there's new two new buildings. Um just just a few days worth of work there, yeah, I started working on that and gosh, twenty nineteen. And then uh twenty of the August, June of twenty twenty, what year are we in there, June twenty twenty-one? Uh we had to tear apart the Innovation Center, I'll just put them all up there, so we had to tear apart the Innovation Center. And or the freshman campus, clear it out and then get the Innovation Center uh prepped and ready to get set up. We moved the mid level campus around because we went, decided to put our fifth graders down to the elementary schools. Again, we moved all our fifth graders down, all fifth grade teachers and and students down to the elementary schools. We moved a portable into Mountain View and set that one up, uh Tanum had three portals that we had had just set up. Months before that, but the real one was the Apple Valley, some of you, that was quite the undertaking, there's a lot of technology and there's a lot of setup. And unfortunately, it was all in a short, 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 short period of time, um I wished it would have been a little faster. I think we got the keys to, but we got the approval to go into Apple Valley. Late July and we started setting up wireless access points, switches, all of our network equipment. Um late July and I didn't think we'd get into some of you until. Gosh, it was early so early August, so it was quite a bit of work in a short, short period of time, but we had uh. Short throw projectors to install, we had computers to install, we had hundreds of phones to install. Um and then all that's do it and keep track of where all of our stuff is going, so it was quite a bit of moving pieces, it was quite the undertaking and. My staff did a fantastic job, uh so some some minor things we did this year. And then uh let's kind of go over some of our technology here, um kind of go cover our network real quick. So our elementary uh wireless access points are being replaced this summer, uh we have partial funding received from E-rate, so they're they're covering. Uh I think I think we're, so they're covering sixty percent of the replacement, we're 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 liable for forty percent, so it's a pretty good deal and we're able to. To get that replaced. Um if you look here, you got seventy-two of the hundred and two switches throughout our district are six plus years old. So we're going to start leveraging some E-rate funding um next year to start replacing some of those in a. Timeline, what is that, staggered stagger release or replacement through those. We'll probably start at the at the high school because it's the the oldest equipment and work our way down to the the other levels. And of course, E-rate funding will be able to assist with that too, so we have some some funds available for that. That's all category two, which is different than the category one that we get funding from for our. Our internet traffic, our actual our two gig pipe to the internet um is all E-rate funded. Uh partially funded, and then we also have E-rate funding that goes for all of our uh category one dark fiber for. Our, so they're all coming through on uh vendor called Fat Beam that we lease fiber from. Um actually, that contract is actually up two years from now, so we're going to be going out to bid for some um. Some new dark fiber for the elementary schools in the next next year and a half probably, so that that's coming up pretty soon. I forgot to add that to my list, but I just thought of it. Uh so we have some district, our district phones, uh majority of our phones are sixteen plus years old. Uh we got our, we got our money's worth out of those things. Uh unfortunately, I had I had planned to start replacing those this year, but. Our vendor changed things up on us and they started following the the process that. Most vendors or software vendors and hardware vendors throughout the world are starting to do, so changing the licensing so they get money every year instead of. Big purchases every, you know, five or six years, so. The their change is kind of put us out of the market with our phone system, we can't afford it anymore, some pretty. Pretty ridiculous pricing that uh I'm not willing to pay for, so we're going in the process of starting to look for some different vendors for our phone systems. Over the next few years, we own our phone system right now, so we don't have to switch anytime soon, so we we've got, you know, three, four, five years. Uh left that we can, we could probably go, my problem is that we're potentially vulnerable for for um who won't have uh. Patches available anymore, so we have to kind of figure out what our pa- pathway is going to move forward that. Um I'm due to all those projects that we did this summer, I'm, we're about three months behind from where we would normally be at this point, so. Um I'm working hard to get caught back up and that's my next next big project that I'm trying to figure out the the pathway for that. These are VoIP phones, so voice over IP, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um we have somewhere in the ballpark of eight hundred, seven hundred fifty, eight hundred phones. It's quite the, you know, two hundred bucks pop, it's it's quite a bit, quite a bit of of uh of money there, so. Hopefully, we'll plan, any type of plan I come up with, we're going to be um trying to reuse the phones we have and. Replace some on a cycle, so there's there's pathways for that we can use the phones we have, so might. Be some cost to it, but it won't be the cost of full replacement, because that's it's a million dollar project, we were to do phone system, so a lot of pieces to that puzzle. Um network cabling, cottonwood, cottonwood, middle school, junior high and white hall. Uh that's that's the thing I'd like to do one of these days, um again, that would be probably a category, that could be actually category one, I think, no, it's category two because in in the building. Uh so E-rate funded potentially down the down the line, we're going to start replacing the most cat five cabling throughout the buildings. Um and getting them with some cat six cable, so. Help increase the speeds, because right now those those cables are actually rated for hundred megs instead of the the gig speeds that we, so. Um hopefully, then the line will be able to get that replaced. Um and then we'll continue with this, some staff monitors, uh I had my list last year, start replacing staff monitors. Because most of our staff monitors are, uh they were used, about used in twenty fourteen, so they're. And they're nineteen inch little square nineteen inch monitors that are, you know, most of them are about twelve to fourteen years old. So we've got their money's worth out of those as well, so we're going to start replacing those. Um that would have been on my project, we would already been started with that had the pandemic not happened and we uh. The whole uh supply chain issue, so we've kind of been kind of holding off so we can get that one figured out, so. We'll probably start getting those ordered um sometime this summer and start rolling them out one by one over the next next school year. So we have uh some other things that we need to get addressed, uh intercom systems, uh Tanum, Cottonwood, Mountain View, White Hall, Middle School. Junior High, freshman innovation, I always call it the freshman campus, I gotta fix that, and the high school. So all these intercom systems are really old, uh gosh, the one in Tanum and Mountain View, I think they're from the eighties. Uh the the one at junior high and middle school, actually, we pulled out a a gateway two thousand circa nineteen ninety-two. Out of there, um last year, we pulled that guy, it was been running the whole time, it's been a real champ, uh but uh we finally, it finally. Kick the bucket and we just replaced it, so we're getting our money's, this technology, so so can't say that, that we're not. Um so these are some some things on on the horizon that we're going to have to start addressing here in the future. Uh high school security camera, high school and Innovation Center, I keep calling freshman campus. Innovation Center, the the cameras are ten plus years old and they're starting to show their age, I know the high school's been replacing ones here and there. Uh but they are starting to get to that point where it's the quality versus new compared or current currently seen. The receipt squares versus actual people on the screen, so uh it'd be nice to get some some money for them to to replace that as well. And then uh we also need some. Cameras at the Tanum, Cottonwood, Mountain View, White Hall, it'd be a nice thing, use some at least some exterior cameras so we can see the parking lots. Uh we don't have any cameras currently at those those locations, so. Yeah. What else I've got? So the next four years, my timeline looks like, how am I doing on time? Am I? Good. Okay, I got a few more minutes. So twenty twenty-three, we're going to be replacing upgraded on which wireless. Replacing staff monitors and hopefully you start looking at the the phone system replacement. Twenty twenty-four, we're going to be replacing district phones. Hopefully. We're going to be looking at a content filter, probably we might start assessing a new one now. If not, we'll be looking at a new one next year and potentially replacing it. We actually already have some we're looking at. So they're they're equivalent to what we have now or or better. We're kind of allowing to see some better reporting. Begin replacing our network equipments, some Asian servers and replace our firewall. Again, our firewall will be E-rate funded as well. So the category funding, category two funding that we can we can leverage. Our sand, our our storage area networks are 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 all of our. File servers and and servers that we run, they'll run and have this big giant server that has a bunch of storage on it. That thing is is at that point where it's going to be end of life here in the next next year or two, twenty twenty-five. And then we'll have to start looking at that. It's a pretty spending replacement there. District phones, servers and network equipment again. And then twenty twenty-six, district phones again. Servers, more network equipment again, and hopefully start replacing some of the cabling, the network cable at middle school. So. So that's the timeline going forward. What I've got, any question? Now that I'm done. Any more questions? I'm ready for him. So the question is about how far if we use something like Hapara, we do not at this time. But one of the products that we're looking at for that new content filter is is has that capability. So it's the classroom management piece as well. We do have land school, which has some of that functionality. It's. Not Hapara quality, but it's it's free. Well, not free. We we own it and we we can use it. So it is available as far as the. That piece, but it's not a full feature like a part is far as a lot of more of it. But it's also a lot more expensive. It's it's three, four dollars a student. So. That's that's a pretty big price tag for for that functionality. We're looking at something that's. Equivalent to. That does more than more than just that. So well, we have some some products mine. Yeah, replacement schedule for the Chromebooks. Next year, we're looking at. So technically, I mean, this funding year for next year, we're looking at replacing two grades. Be third. Third grade and eighth grade, which we're targeting. We also have to replace another grades worth of Chromebooks this year because they're kind of. We bought a bunch of Chromebooks at one one time. So we're trying to get this all in a. A cycle. So we have every two years, we're replacing the third grade and fifth grade. We're actually not replacing. We're handing out Chromebooks to the third graders. And then we're handing out Chromebooks to the eighth graders, swapping theirs out. Every year, every year, we're hitting a third. That way we get four or five years on on a on a Chromebook. So we're trying to get that last. Piece. So now have the fifth grader or the seventh graders and eighth graders next year. But that'll part will be the the seventh graders will be funded out of next school years. The third and eighth graders will be funded out of this school year. So we have three grades that we're technically replaced next year. So. And part of that is where we have Chromebooks that are end of life that are no longer supported. So they don't get Google updates. So that means that they they aren't supported for our testing, our S back testing or our I ready software. So they like to have the latest and greatest Chrome Chrome version. If we're behind too far, those applications won't work. So we have to keep sure, make sure. Our devices can can keep that that pathway. Any other questions? Bolt purchase, we we do, we use a lot of master contracts. We use a lot of state contracts. We use the. Was Sipsey, was Sipsey has a master contract that we use as well. So yes, we use a lot of King County purchases as well. So King County has done a lot of good stuff for us. So. We use those master contracts in our in our valley here. We have a lot of diversity, different sized. School districts and they they're doing different things. So they're not quite. At the same spot. So it's kind of hard to get a master agreement when you are a contract when they're all doing something slightly different when they have different. Different funds available to them. So. You know, questions? Excellent.
Okay, we'll go ahead and is there any items arising, Dr. Finch? Anything else for the study session or can we save that for the regular board meeting?
No, nothing else for the study session.
All right, great. Then we'll go ahead and adjourn the study session. I could use a little break here. Can we come back at seven oh five? Everybody? All right, thank you. We'll be back at seven oh five. Okay, we'll go ahead and resume the regular board meeting. And before we get started there, I'd also just like to add an additional thanks to Joe. Through there, Jeremy and Sheila for an outstanding presentation. It was very thrilling, informative. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started here. Board notes, no call of order, pledge of allegiance already done. Changes to the agenda, Dr. Finch, I believe you had an item.
Yes, we do need to have a travel request. So that'll be number six. It's for Minerva Pardo. To attend the National Migrant Education Conference, April sixth, April tenth in San Antonio, Texas. And that would be paid by state funds.
Great. Thank you. Going on to communications, response to public comment, any responses?
Yes, we had a request at the last board meeting to get more information about. How how does the, you know, is there a curriculum for teaching of gender identity? And so I did. With our administrative team, we meet every Wednesday. I did get in from elementary principal, mid-level principal in the high school. So the activity that we did for the Martin Luther King, that was just exclusive to the high school. There is not a curriculum that's taught at the elementary and mid-level. The principal said that. They do teach students to be respectful, to call students by the name that they requested and to use the pronouns requested. So really, the. The message is to be respectful, but there's not a scope and sequence of curriculum for that. That's the response to public comment.
All right, thank you. We'll go on to program presentation.
All right. So one of our goals this year was to expand our focus on early learning. I did include some information in the superintendent's report about the return on investment when we do focus on early learning. And so we have program presentation this evening. We're calling it the family engagement. For preschool program because oftentimes when we think of early learning, we think of it being school based. But wanted to share with the board and the community, appreciate all the community members who are attending this evening so they can hear about this. We wanted to share that early learning is not necessarily school based. But there are great things that we're doing through family engagement to prepare students for success at kindergarten. And so we have Leanne Crippen, who is our coordinator for the parent child plus program and also helps to coordinate play and learn. And then we have Minerva Pardo, our family engagement coordinator who works side by side with the projects. So we're going to go ahead and have a PowerPoint presentation. So we'll ask the board to go ahead and we can sit in the audience so we can see the PowerPoint. And so just give us a second here, Minerva and Leanne, and we'll transition to the audience.
Thank you. So you know me, my name is Minerva Pardo, a family. Schools, family and community engagement coordinator, and I am happy to share information about these two wonderful programs. So you know, early learning is really important, as Peter just mentioned, and I love this quote by Maria Montessori. The goal of early childhood education should be to activate the child's own natural to learn. With that being said. I want to, we also define what family engagement looks like. And family engagement is a strength based process. For schools, families and communities to build equitable and inclusive partnerships. With the focus on culturally and linguistically responsive relationships that work towards all students' success. So we have two great programs. The one is parent child plus and play and learn. And Leanne Creepin, the coordinator for both programs, actually, she's doing a lot of work on play and learn as well. She's going to start sharing all the work that parent child plus implies.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Leanne Creppen. So parent child plus used to be called parent child home program. And the district, it's been in the district since two thousand one. So it's been here a long time. I am the coordinator and I have three home visitors or early learning specialist. Lynette Longy, she's been with the program since two thousand. So she's pretty much since the beginning. And then we have Heidi Santana and Kimberly Benoit that are the home visitors for the program. So we, and parent child plus is a national program. We follow national model. We work closely with the parent child plus state and national programs to make sure we're staying in fidelity with the programs. Really, the programs are to to make sure we're reaching families where they live. So that's why we do home visits. We build trust through local hiring and we shared this picture again up there, the second picture. Because Lynn, since she's been in the program or early learning specialist so long, she actually. Was a home visitor with Heidi when Heidi's son in two thousand nine, when he was three or four years old. He is now fifteen years old, but so she can't, she turned from a parent in the program, receiving home visits from. Into a home visitor that's being able to do monolingual Spanish and bilingual home visits with our families in West Valley. We also work to promote child of the parent child interaction and facilitate community connection. So we have. Celebrations that I'll share in a little bit. So this is the national theory, logic model for the parent child plus program. The theory is to build attachment, to build language, play and social cultural connections with the families. So that's the first box. And you'll notice that it moves to from left to right. So the next box would be the practice. So the home visitors or the early learning specialists work to build relationships with the families. They respond to the strengths. They facilitate the parent child interaction during the home visits and they collaborate with. To help the family be ready for school and ready to be engaged. Then the next box down would be the parent and the child. So. The home visitor helps facilitate the communication consistency, affection and responsiveness. And we we monitor that through a an assessment called the Piccolo. And I'll talk about that a little bit later. And then the child outcomes are independent, social cooperation, task orientation, cognitive ability and emotional stability. At the national level. We we know that parent child plus graduates score two times higher on social emotional skills than their peers. Parent child plus graduates are fifty percent more likely to be prepared for kindergarten. And they are average, on average, ten months above their chronological age. Oh, I did want to point out, don't move yet. So in the middle of that, the circle, I really like this picture because the home visitor or the early learning specialist is the person on the left-hand side. So the other person that's behind supporting the parent while the parent interacts and teaches their child. So I really wanted to make sure we pointed that out because that's how we want the parent to see the home visit, as they're coming in, not as the teacher, but as the support for them to encourage and engage with them to support their child. So Parent-Child Plus is a two-year program. We usually start program in October, and the families have to complete 23 weeks. We see the families two times a week, which is a huge commitment, but we finish all the, we have 100% completion of families completing all 23 weeks, whether they're missing for being sick or whatever. We have enough time to make sure we get all those visits complete through the school year. So the first home visit of the week, which would take place either on a Monday or Tuesday, is generally an introduction to the new toy or book that we bring in. And there's also a guide sheet so the parents get more ideas as we leave the home. They'll have different ideas of what they can do with the child with that new toy or with that book. That second home visit, we review the toy or book and see what the child, talk to the parent about what the child's learned since the last visit. So the second home visit has to be like two days later. So it's either Wednesday or Thursday. And so there's also an extension activity that goes along with that, which is either a game or a craft. And during this time, I know the kindergarten teachers love us because we introduce the kids to cutting, using scissors, glue, and paste, and paint. And so they're more independent when they're coming into kindergarten because they're exposed to three and four years old. Families receive more than 25 books while they're in the program, and they receive 23 free educational toys while they're in the program. So these are just a lot of different things that we do besides just coming in for the visits. I always tell this to people, if you, normally a home visitor sees the families more than the aunt sees the families because they see them twice a week. So the parents really build a trust with the, with the home visitor. And so we bring in a lot of positivity to the, to the home. We provide an ASQ3 developmental screening, which with that screening, if we see any delays, we can refer them to the Developmental Preschool, or if they're younger, we can refer them to Children's Village for, you know, more help. The child behavior, the CBT, is something we do pre and post in the, in the spring to see the behavior traits in the child and how they increase during the program. The piccolo is what I talked about, the parent, parenting interaction with the child. So it's a checklist of observations linked to outcomes. So we do those pre and post, spring and fall. And then the relationship assessment tool, who we use to identify domestic violence. And we try to provide families with resources around that if we do have screenings that show domestic violence. And then the last one is the PHQ9, which is a patient health questionnaire, and that's a depression screening. And we also come in and talk to the families about things that they can do for their well-being. So it's not just preschool, it's also just helping the family. And like I said, we do generally two community connections where we try to get all the families together. We are in hopes that we'll be able to have one this spring for our graduation for the second year families. And that brings the families together, and they just get to play and have dinner and celebrate all the work that they've done throughout the school year. And that is a very fun time. And just to reiterate, we do really try to provide referrals and resources to families because they're not going to be available for us twice a week if they're not, their stomachs are not fed, if they don't have a place to live. So we really do try to connect them to those resources.
Be careful so they don't fall. Where does red go?
So this is the first-year family. She's three years old, and I think this is a review visit. So she's had it twice.
Okay, where do they go? Uh, is that orange or red? Look at this color. Be careful. Okay, good job.
Nine.
Yay! Mom!
Three, four, five.
Six, seven. So that video was the talking ball, and it introduces numbers. And then if you turn it inside out, it does the alphabet, but it also is gross motor skills for the child and smile on mom's face and a connection for the family. So that's really what we're, what we're all about.
Be careful so they don't fall.
Oh, okay. So in the last three years, and they've been kind of difficult years, but in 2019, we had 45 families enrolled. We completed 1,035 home visits. Of course, those, some of those visits had to be virtual visits because we had the pandemic. Virtual visits in the beginning were really difficult for families because they were used to us coming to them all the time. And so we had a little bit of hesitation going into 2020, 2021 with families being hesitant about being in the program still, just because they wanted us in person, and we weren't in person yet. And they, so with that year, we served 37 families with 1,700 home visits, virtually, mostly virtually. We did start seeing in-home last spring. So we've been back for a year in-home, and most home visiting programs in the state have not been back in person yet. And this year, we're serving 30 families, and that's still in progress, but we will complete all 46 visits for the school year for all 30 families.
Okay, so now Play and Learn. Both programs, they're based on the framework that is the backbone for, for family engagement, and that is strengthening families protective factors framework. And when we do protective factors, we are building parental resilience. You can see the home visitor going to that home and bringing all this, the support to that, to the parent to learn how to be that first and most important teacher for that child. We build social connections. There is connection between the home visitor and the family, but when they come to play and learn, they, those same families that received the Parent-Child Plus program, they can come and interact with other families in a school environment. So we are building connections, and they're meeting other families that have the same needs that they do. So when they say, my child's two years old, he's chaos, he's, okay, he's going to meet another, or she's going to meet another parent with that same two-year-old chaos kid. So that's beautiful because they build connections. It's also very important, as she mentioned, we have activities in the, in the Parent-Child Plus, but we also do in our Play and Learn that builds social-emotional competence on children. And this is something really nice that we can work with families because we adults never learn how to self-regulate. So it's important that families also understand that parents need to learn how to self-regulate so they can do a better job parenting. Knowledge of parenting achievement. Our children need, our parents need to learn what to expect from their children at each of the stages. So that's a very important part that our home visitors and facilitators in our Play and Learn can provide to each or family. And like Leanne was mentioning, a child is never going to be ready for learning when the child or the family is facing challenges. So concrete support in times of need, another great protective factor that is part of these preschool programs. So when we have Play and Learn, we welcome parents, and the caregivers with the children are just walking around, and they are visiting the different stations and different activities that we prepare for them. It's a, it's school readiness because it's based on the child's physical, social, emotional, language, and cognitive development during those first five years of life. So in Play and Learn, we receive children that are one-year-old, up to five years of age. So it covers a very, very good age range. And adults get the chance to learn about child development, what is expected of children entering kindergarten, and many activities they can do at home to support that learning. Let me move these so that I remember. There you go. So the first group was at a tenam, and that was a while ago. And we offered AM and PM groups, AM, you know, and before noon. The second group, the second time we have groups, we have groups at White Hollow, but also at a tenam. And that was pre-COVID, and we had a lot of attendance at White Hollow. We even, we were receiving even 20 families per session. It was a lot of families. Then COVID hits, and that was a problem. But now we have Play and Learn at every elementary school. And that's fabulous because you will see the numbers. So we can serve not only AM or PM, but we serve both. We have three groups AM, and we have three groups PM. Oops. If it's okay, I would like to check my thumb drive that I have data, that it's important. And I don't know why it's not here. I probably edited one, and I didn't save it. Just give me, is it okay if I look? Okay, so what I wanted to share was data. How many families we've been able to share? And thank you. So now I can't see it. In 2018, okay, that's the first time Play and Learn, we were serving 40, geez, 49 families, 49 parents that were coming on a regular basis, and 68 children coming on a regular basis. In 2019, it was 30 families coming, families coming on a regular basis, and 42 children being served. 2020, this is just at a tenam, 21 families and 23 children. That's a total of 100 families being served and 133 children being served. So the other slide has bigger numbers, hopefully, and I can see better. So now this year, I'm excited to read these because we have served, and this is March, right? 199 parents. And we have, we have served so far 148 children. This is just in one year. And the number that we serve in three years, it's 100 families in three years. So having those six groups at all our elementaries, it's really a blessing. So I'm sorry, I had other videos showing you, but I don't know what I did. Technology is definitely not my thing, and presenting after Jeremy was not very. That was a big problem. But if you have any questions, we are willing to answer. Yes. The question is, where in each building are we having Play and Learn? We are using the preschool classroom. They work Monday through Thursday, so Fridays, that space is usually available. We know that teachers are still busy doing things, meeting with families, doing evaluations or, but we take 90 minutes of their day to have that Play and Learn session.
When you're doing your home visits and that, dealing with the program, how many times are you dealing with older siblings doing parenting rather than the parents themselves?
Um, that does happen quite a bit, but I feel like the older siblings are generally at school when we do home visits. We do have some evening visits for working families. And we, we allow any family member to participate in the home visit as far as an adult. Yeah. But we do try to usually meet with mom or dad. So if we have to do it during their work, for their work schedule, the home visitors will see them in the evening so that we're not with a sibling.
When he was looking down. For the home visits, you have a slide about the number of families that will be in service. It's, it's gone down just a little bit, and obviously the pandemic had an effect on that.
Yeah.
I would surmise, what, what is our capacity? How many, how many families can they serve with our system?
Right now. Yeah, yeah, for the home visitors, the home visitor should only, at full capacity, serve 12 families, that's 24 home visits. But with Play and Learn, I've had them be at 10 instead this year because they were adjusting to not being able to do home visits on Fridays. And so that's why it's at 30.
So 10, 10 families per staff?
Yes, yeah. Three home visitors.
Three home visitors.
Oh, we have one bilingual.
Are we turning people away then? Because this year it was 30.
Yeah, we have a, we, we do have a waiting list, but those families will still be eligible next year because we have to serve them for two years. They have to be in the right age, age window. So those families are on a waiting list for next year, next fall.
What's that age window?
They have to be between 16 months and three years old as of September 1st, so we can get them, have them for two years.
We're pursuing official funding.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I should say that. Yeah, DCYF, it has an expansion grant, and we haven't really tapped into that ever. I knew, I just, I was hired in 2017, so I was kind of just waiting till I felt ready to expand. And so we are writing, I'm in the middle of writing a grant right now to expand with two additional home visitors and a part-time home visitor. So we would expand to additional, have an additional hope, 29 families to serve. So we'd be at 59 if we're able to get that funding.
I don't know if this is the right, if I can talk about this, or if you're the right group to talk about, but I'm concerned about our kids that are entering kindergarten, there's barely thoughts, but they're not, are there any plans or anything in the works to address that population of kids? Your district, that might be directed more at Stacy, you know, we have a conversation with her.
We do have a transition kindergarten. So that's right now, we're doing that mid-year, so families could wait and have their child start at mid-year, and then continue the next year with kindergarten. And that's the transition kindergarten program, and that's how this year at Cochran Elementary. We are looking, the state, you know, we're always wondering if that's, the state's going to continue this work kindergarten, so that's actually a question right now. We're looking, kind of waiting on the final approval of the budget, but it's got a pretty much of legislature, but we're still looking at some plans and maybe some opportunities to run kindergarten, even starting, but we're still waiting for the final budget.
Yeah, I would also like to add, when families come to Play and Learn, if they come every week, they're getting a lot of skills at Play and Learn. We, we had a little kiddo that wouldn't talk to anybody at the beginning, and he's been coming regularly, and now he's social, he'll actually participate in the craft. Usually, he didn't want to be at the table with all the other kids. So I just started pulling him to the table first and getting him started before we brought the other kids. So he's, and his mom said he's asking for the little kids at Play and Learn during the week and wanting to come. So I think if we can encourage families to come to Play and Learn, that they'll get some skills to help their kid be more ready.
And I would like to add also, for our migrant population and ELL, we have had for the last four years, a kindergarten readiness night. We have four nights, the second semester of the school year, and we provide two literacy activities, two math activities, one social-emotional, one STEM, and also provide information about health. And we've been teaming doing that.
One more question.
All right, again, we appreciate the presentation by Minerva Pardo and Leanne Crippen. And just to share with the board and the audience, our work in early learning has been getting a lot of recognition, both across the state and actually across the nation. West Valley will be hosting a site visit of the AAS, a early learning cohort. Uh, AAS is the National Superintendent's Organization. So there'll be superintendents from across the nation coming in May to visit West Valley. And certainly this really effective use of our staff time to have home visiting on Monday, Wednesday and Tuesday, Thursday. And then to have the same staff invite families in on Friday to do play and learn. And like whenever I said, to build that social connection for families, it's just really, it's really great structure. And of course, it's great people that are making it happen. Um, that structure, why bringing families in, we can give them resources when they are in the door. So that's that concrete support and time as well. So appreciate the work there. Also, in response to public comment, we're still in communications. Mr. Thorne had reminded me that there was a, a public comment at the last board meeting and I had shared with the board via email, follow-up, but there was a concern that was expressed about hot water in a classroom at the junior high. And I did, um, the next day, the, this morning, go and talk to the teacher. Uh, when she had moved into the building, she had talked to a custodian about not having the hot water. And unfortunately, uh, there was not a follow-through there. When she brought to the attention of this year's principal on a Friday, he immediately put the work order in. They worked on it that next week. And then the following Monday, there was hot water in the classroom. So there is currently hot water in that classroom at the junior high. And just wanted to let the audience know that we did follow up, up on that. And I had shared that with the board via email on that, uh, last month, a week when it was, uh, hot water was in the, in the classroom.
Peter, if I, Dr. Finch, if I may, I think it's also noteworthy that you shared with the rest of the board that we put some additional processes in place to the staff about these types of things, uh, getting addressed and, and proper channels to make sure that there's follow-up in the future. If there are concerns of this nature, uh, from a facility standpoint, to be addressed in a timely fashion.
Right, just to let the audience know, uh, the board is on the WVSD everyone. So when that goes out, that goes out to everyone. And so I did follow up with the email to everyone that, um, when you make that request to the custodian, uh, to please also put it in writing so that we have a written record to CC the principal and Tim Kritschler, our director of facilities. So that email did go out to all staff. In fact, it was multiple times because we said to bring the CCs in there. So they, they got the message multiple times. So certainly apologize to our, our family there that, you know, that was a very emotional comment at the last board meeting. And apologize to the staff member, uh, that, you know, we were not able to get the follow-through there. But hopefully we do have some systems in place now, especially having that written record. I think that will help us in the future.
Yeah, I gotta, I have to say, Peter, I retired seven, eight years ago. We had that policy in place then. I mean, when Tim Chrislow had, when I was there, told us that if we have something to do, send it out in a written form, not just call somebody. It was in a written form. That's not new. That's been around for a long time.
Right. Well, we had, we had a good reminder that we sent out just recently to all staff. So it was good to have that reminder.
Okay, thank you. It was good information to have and, uh, hopefully we both experience that again in the future. Moving on to item six on the agenda, public comment of non-agenda items. Again, um, we have increased the amount of time to five minutes for anyone who would like to speak. And I do have one person, uh, that has signed the list requesting to speak. But I'm going to start with anyone that is attending via Zoom that has, that they would like to share. Do we have any on Zoom? Okay, thank you. Then we'll go ahead with the in-house, uh, is it Shauna? If you would, step up to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Shauna and I have two students in the West Valley School District. Um, I just wanted to speak a little bit about bathroom policy. Um, it's my understanding that if a student identifies as a certain gender, no matter their political gender, they can use the restroom that they identify as. Um, what, I just, um, why is it that I have to ask about a policy to know about this? Um, I feel like there should be a transparency. We talk about transparency in the school district. I had to find out from a different parent about this policy. Um, I have even asked one of my students about this policy. Um, she had no idea. Um, I feel like you need to be transparent in with the students as well as with parents. Um, you as a school should be informative and let every parent know of your policy so that we can equip our children and have a conversation with them outside of the school. Um, as a parent, I understand, um, that your role is to protect, or that your role is to protect each child. But if my daughter feels uncomfortable using a restroom with an individual who has a penis but identifies as a woman, what are you doing to protect my daughter and her rights, vice versa? So that is my comment and that's all.
Okay, thank you again for your comment and Dr. Finch, I'm sure we'll have a response uh, at our next meeting to address your concerns with some investigation into it. Okay, any other public comments? I don't see any on the list here. So we're going to go ahead and move on to item number seven, approval of consent agenda. Uh, I guess we can take these apart or just all in, if somebody would like to make a motion to approve them.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Okay, moving on to item number eight, approval of travel requests. Is this Dr. Finch where we have the additional item to add?
Yes, I'd like to add number six, Minerva Pardo, National Migrant Education Conference, April sixth to April tenth, San Antonio, Texas, paid by state funds.
Dr. Finch, a request, when, uh, can we, I think we can move forward to approving this tonight. The, you know, the usual form with the information on the conference becomes available. Could that be circulated to the board? I mean, but, but not just the, not just the form, but usually like the, like the agenda and all, all that good stuff. I, I actually like to read that.
Yep, we'll make sure you get the agenda and.
That's not going to stop me from approving tonight, but I do like to see the, I do like to see the backup. I'll, I'll move to approve the travel requests, one through six.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion by Mr. Thorne to approve the travel request, items one through six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion five zero. All right, now we move on to item eight B, approval of policy additions, revisions, first reading. Uh, Dr. Finch, anything here?
Yes, this is recommended by Washington State School Association to actually update the title of this policy four two zero zero. Uh, and it's just to clarify that parents do have access to the classroom and it needs to be done within the procedures of the school.
Okay. All right, um, any questions or should we just go ahead and take a motion on this?
I move to approve policy forty-two hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. We have a motion to approve policy, uh, forty-two hundred. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item C, approval of twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three instructional calendar. Any discussion from anyone or would someone like to make a motion?
I, I move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three dis- instructional calendar.
I, pardon, I'm sorry. I do have a question. I'm sorry, but I mean, I, I apologize. There's been a motion, but I do have a question. So, uh, it doesn't have to be, but typically we try to align the neighboring districts, uh, uh, breaks with ours. Is that, uh, was that consistent again this year, Dr. Finch?
Yes, and, um, you're actually on the count, you can see we're starting earlier than usual and so is the Aquamos District as well. So we're, we're kind of aligning with that as well.
Not that we have to do that, but that.
So spring break is the same and, and the winter break is the same, et cetera.
Sorry, Mr. Jaeger.
No problem.
Okay, um, if there are no further discussion items on that, we'll go ahead, since we have a motion and take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to nine, items arising. I actually have one that I would just be curious about. I really appreciate the participation of the community in this auditorium. I'm just wondering, is it time to consider returning to the library or do we like this forum, this format that we are doing right now? It seems to me it's a little bit more comfortable in a smaller environment, but it doesn't have to be. We can always come back to this location if we feel that we're going to have a sizable audience. But I throw that out to the rest of the board.
Well, I think, um, I mean, I, I think we have a sound, I think we have a sound issue in the library. In trying to have the sound also broadcasting by Zoom, which it, which the feedback that I've been receiving is, is that's very much appreciated that we are doing that on Zoom, that, that we're, that the quality of the sound is better. Um, doing it this way, uh, so that may be a sound system issue, uh, moving back to the library. And actually, along those lines, I, in my items arising, was going to mention, um, that I really appreciate the monthly, every month of the board gets a report from every school building. And I, I really enjoy reading those. And a theme of those reports is, uh, back to normal was a continuing theme in that. And that was really cool. And one of the things that, I mean, i- if we're talking about the library, I'm not sure if maybe now's the time to look at, um, going back in our first meeting of the month to, uh, each of the buildings. I know that we haven't done that. Uh, the buildings have come to us for a whole variety of reasons. Um, I don't think that's necessarily something that we saw tonight, but, um, I'd just like to put it out there that that would be a nice thing for us to, uh, when we can handle the technology like we are in terms of broadcasting and the sound system and we merge those together. At least for me, I think that would be nice to, to, to resume our, our tour of the, of the every building in the district, so.
Thank you for your comment. I, I actually agree with both of those points. I just asked a question as to, you know, how the rest of you feel. Um, because we're so spread out in here, but, um, I, I do agree, we've made some incredible strides with the quality of sound and just the environment that we're operating in right now. So there is some real positive advantage to being here. Um, again, I just mentioned that as a thought, it's one of those signs of returning to things being normal as you talk about with the, um, whole school presentations, which I thoroughly enjoyed as well, so.
I'd love to go back to the schools for their, especially if it's their night to present thing. But I want to make sure that we have the technology to make it work at each school. So that the people that are on Zoom can hear it, no matter where we are. We, it works here. And I'd like to keep it here until we know we can guarantee that we can do it every place else too.
Okay, I don't disagree with any of that, but I immediately thought about Mr. Cox's presentation to us on his plate for the next two years. And I'm not so sure that he's going to be able to squeeze in, making that a possibility in a real timely manner. But I do agree that it's something I, I think we should work on as soon as possible.
We'll take a look at it. Um, there is a question I have, whether, uh, maybe the Zoom is limiting us.
So just, oh, wow. Um, yeah, well, we'll take a look at this. And as a question I have, whether Zoom might be limiting us, we do need to continue with Zoom while there's an emergency order in place. Um, after that, we could, we could, uh, stream our board meetings. And there's a ability to do that on YouTube, you could stream live. And then we might not get the feedback that we were getting with the audio when we were trying to Zoom. But certainly we hear loud and clear, we'd like to return to the schools. Um, some of the school, um, coming up here in the spring is the high school and, and the innovation center. So, um, we'll, we'll take a look at that. And but definitely as we look towards next school year, know that, we know that we'd like to be able to return to those schools when they host a presentation. And, um, and certainly, uh, to have something where we can showcase the new schools that we have, because it's been kind of difficult to do that during COVID. So we'll work on that, okay?
Okay, thank you for all of those comments, um, and good, good discussion, a brief discussion there. And those are things for us definitely to consider in the future. I do have one other item arising, not so much an item arising, but more of a information point for Dr. Finch. So, so I have not heard or maybe others have. What are the plans for graduation this year? Are we returning to things in person with that as well? At the Sundome, great, okay.
Yes, graduation will be in the Sundome.
Okay, thank you. And then that'd be nice. I think everyone will be looking forward to that. And again, another sign that we are trying to get back to normal here. So thank you for that information. Um, anybody else have anything under items arising? All right, we'll move on to item ten, reports. Anything there, Dr. Finch, that, or anyone that strikes anyone's attention? Okay, is that an action item?
No.
All right, um, then we do have those five reports there that I guess everyone either has looked at or can look at. Um, we'll go on to item eleven, superintendent report. Dr. Finch?
Yeah, just so the audience, uh, knows that for the superintendence report, I wanted to share with the board uh, some of the research behind the importance of early learning and how it impacts really the trajectory of a person's entire life. So there's been research done by a Nobel Prize-winning economist. It's a man out of Chicago. And there's a Chicago longitudinal study that's been continuing since nineteen eighty-six. They followed, uh, these, they were young children in a high-quality early learning and now they're adults. And it shows that early learning made a positive impact on so many life outcomes. In terms of school, there was a reduced need for intervention, reduced need for special education, uh, reduced, as they become adults, reduced substance abuse, which means reduced need for, um, incarceration, these type of things. And then the increase, so there was an increase in academic achievement. There's an increase in, um, grad, uh, high school graduation, an increase in college attainment, an increase in wages, which means an increase in paying taxes and just increase in overall health and wellness. Uh, a lot of that is due to the decrease in substance use. So as kids come into kindergarten, uh, we've seen the research there as well, that the one grade where the most variability is kindergarten, where we can make advantage, get kids on track for, uh, achievement at grade level. And so that's, that's our. grade level. And so that's, that's our, here in West Valley, you know, we're getting that recognition because we're seeing results. And our kindergarten scores have just been amazing the last couple of years. I think I've shared that before, but three out of our six elementary schools have had a hundred percent of kindergarten students in the spring reading at grade, grade level. So this work is, uh, having a positive impact for our students here in West Valley. And just appreciate the presentation this, uh, this evening from Minerva and Leanne, because it's the work that they're doing and, and all of our schools, um, that we've had preschool now offerings at all our schools and our partnership with our community. Um, we've continued now, Stacy has taken the leadership to get our pre-K initiative back up and running and having our meetings with our early learning partners. So many good things happening in West Valley, uh, when it comes to early learning. And I wanted to share that research with the board to show that there really is a, a positive return on investment when we invest in early learning.
And it needs to be stated that I think the focus on, on early learning really started happening when Peter Finch got involved as the assistant superintendent. That's where it really started centering. And that's where the improvements began, was when Peter Finch took charge of that area.
I appreciate that. A lot of, you look at the research and, you know, once, once you become knowledgeable of, of what a positive impact early learning has on a person's entire type outcomes, then, once you become knowledgeable about that, you know, then you gotta take some responsibility and make things happen. So that's what we're doing here in West Valley. And looking forward to sharing that work with, uh, the superintendents from across the nation that are coming in May for the site visit.
Okay.
That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Finch. All right, we'll go, we're getting near the end here. Board reports, board development, anyone? All right, hearing none. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. It's seven fifty-five PM on the twenty-second. Thank you, everybody, for attending and participating. Let's see if we have documents and signatures.